And I think Commissioner Wood said he was on his way, I've not heard it from that line yet, so I'm not sure. If he'll be here if he's running a little late, but as usual. So I want to say just a couple of words and then we'll, I'll turn it over to Tim for the agenda item that we have here. I want to start by saying, I know the last meeting, I don't, I think we all believe, understand or recognize that we weren't as effective or as efficient as we could have and should have been. And I think that's, we're gonna take all the blame for that, not having the agenda ready, itemized and, and, but, but a part of that also was getting outside of our normal, this is an official work session and we have invited participants to the table for input and discussions. And I think when, and no disrespect to anybody, we really want the, the public input, but it's hard to have a work session when you have public speakers, the public asking questions or making comments in the middle of a, of a conversation from, from people that are here. So with respect to the process, I want to try to hold our conversations to the, to the members of the committee here, the work session committee. Anybody in the public that has comments or has questions, please direct those to the appropriate person, whether it's the Development Authority or Planning and Zoning or the Board of Commissioners or the Community Advisory Group. So with that, we're talking about tonight, the data center text amendment. And there was discussion at the last meeting about M two, M three, all these things. And, and I want to give a shout out to Steve who brought up, I think the comment was, what's wrong with M two? Why can't we fix it? And I took that to heart and I said, you know, let's, let's look at it and see while we can. So that led us to a whole conversation about can we fix M two? We know that the Development Authority has asked for some M three designations in the industrial park. I think, I'm not speaking for the board, but I think everybody supports that and, and that that's the right direction. Most industrial parks are designed and set up for heavy industry. And so I think we do want to move forward with M three in the industrial park. But we're not talking about an M three classing, classification or zoning classification at this meeting. This meeting was strictly about data centers and the text amendment that we had on the table that we were discussing. So I think I'd really like us to focus on that. We have, but the board has voted to get legal representation for an M three going forward. That, that takes time, the whole process is different than a, a text amendment. So I think we'll, we'll stick with the agenda item of the text amendment for data centers. And I will turn it over to the knowledgeable ones.
So the goal here will be to go through the draft ordinance that we've had put together and to lay them pick apart. Hopefully everyone's got a copy of it, if not, we've got some extras here. And so we'd just like to work through each section, comment on what's been done and then move forward from there. The first section was creating definitions, has created three categories of data centers. The goal being that these could be considered conditional uses based on their tier level. The minor data center meeting those thresholds, conditional use in C two. Major would be a conditional use in M one and then a campus being a conditional use in the M two district. Just open that portion up now for some discussion. During none, we will proceed forward to ninety six point seven. This is getting into the meat of it, data center development. That, that point there that it's referring to the entire contiguous tract of land. We have the height restriction of seventy five feet. Will mention in the industrial park, there has already been a variance granted blanket for that development where there is not a height restriction. So anywhere outside of that area, this will put in a seventy five foot height restriction. That increases our current minimum height, maximum height of thirty five feet for buildings in general. The setbacks, these were modified, seven point three, to take into account the different size of these types of developments and then the setbacks were adjusted for that. For a minor data center, it'll be the minimums from the underlying zoning district. So depending on what that property is abutting, that could range anywhere from twenty five feet down to five feet for the setbacks for a minor data center. Major and campus is going to be one hundred and two hundred. Anyone have comments on those sections?
A lot of other counties are currently passing or drafting similar data center amendments, did you know? And I'm seeing a pretty prevalent pattern of three hundred to five hundred feet in property lines. Is there any, any way that we would be able to expand the major and the campus data centers to, you know, kind of meeting in the middle there around three hundred? I know the developer that we have received a previous application for has said off the record that they would be open to three hundred foot setbacks. And I'm only mentioning that as a good example for somebody who's playing this game and, and developing elsewhere, that they are open to stricter setbacks that will only be a benefit to the county.
For industrial authority, specifically industrial park, I think two hundred feet is proper. And it is, that's standard, right? I mean, that's probably already what our setbacks are now for whatever industry comes in, right? I don't want to limit, I don't, whatever other companies have talked to us in the past, doesn't matter. I care about the future viability of industrial park. I would like it to be a focus.
So we've got one suggestion of modifying major and campus to three hundred feet. Also a suggestion of leaving what has been proposed here.
But you're, are you only speaking to a campus data center? Two hundred feet?
I'm speaking, I just don't want to limit the industrial park and what it can bring in regarding, I don't want to say any president's going to limit the industrial park and what can be used for.
Because I always lead to a distance, there is, I'm trying to figure out where you were concerned about versus where you might be able to.
So an example would be if, if the industrial park was broken up over, Tim, how would this apply to industry, not a data center, but?
This does not apply to any of the lot data centers.
The industrial parks are broken up into five sets, five different customers and each one has to have its own setback of three hundred feet. Now, you know, we're creating these huge areas between different industries or different opportunities to put in the industrial park. I don't want to cause a problem there, right? If the, if the industrial parks start being broken up and sold off to other industries.
Can we exclude the industrial park from the three hundred foot apartment, the three hundred feet everywhere else? Because the major ones are, are M one, right? Am I right?
Uh, M two. No, major's M one, campus is M two.
So could we, could we add language that expands that buffer distance without complicating things too much?
I would think that the way that would be accomplished is similar to what the Development Authority did was for the set, the height requirement modification, applying for a variance to the industrial park for data centers and reducing the setbacks for them.
And I'm not sure which is, I don't want to say easy or simpler, but what provides what the, because, because I would agree in, in industrial park. Because we really, when you have an industrial park like that, you want to utilize as much of that land as possible. That's, we, we, we paid for it and we built it designed for that. Just worried about, uh, because that would put a six hundred foot space between two buildings.
And I'm not trying to mess with the industrial park, I'm just trying to add distance, if it's not in the industrial park.
Could it be modified to just like property lines bordering residences? You know, like I think there's only maybe two sides of the industrial park that have, you know, that would probably be.
This could be worded setbacks from residentially zoned property jacks.
Right, so then you don't have six hundred feet or whatever in between other businesses. Just thinking about proactive protective measures for the residents around the industrial park.
I guess, is any land around the industrial park zoned residential is probably the zone I like to call it, right?
Uh, there is residential adjacent.
Yeah, there's houses, but our name is houses, you know, residential zone area.
Yes.
Again, you know, going back to the Comprehensive Use Plan twenty twenty two, statement was made that the industrial park needs to be marketed and made it as marketable as it can be. And I just, I don't want to do anything that's gonna reduce that marketability.
I tend to agree with that, that you can green space yourself to where sites not on, well, not even before this intended purpose. You may have a builder coming and say, hey, look, I'm going automatically, I'm going to two seventy five, I'm going to two twenty five, I'm going to two hundred.
Yep. Well, I thi- I think we do need to come to some, some consensus between what y'all will recommend to the commission and what the commission would, would vote for. Because at the end of the day, we, we've got to get to a, we've got to get to a point where we do something. We, we, we're meeting and we're meeting and we're meeting and, and we keep talking about it. I mean, it, to me, we're talking about the dist- of a hundred foot distance and everybody's agreeing that the industrial park don't want to be hand tied, but we've got certain residents that are on the border of the industrial park. But we keep focusing back on the industrial park that I'm going to argue is the last place we need to focus on because that was designed for this. And, and, and I hate to say that, that, you know, we don't, I don't want to say we don't care about the residents close to the industrial park, but it was an industrial park designed for that. And if we start limiting what we can do in the industrial park by a hundred feet for setbacks, I think we're doing a disservice to the industrial park. I think we're, we're limiting that for very few people because we're not doing that anywhere else in the, in the county, you know? And if we're doing it everywhere in the county, then we're looking at our, you know, our setbacks on the five acres or less, you know? I just, I, I'm with you, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, but uh.
And I'm not trying to mess with the industrial park, I was only trying to say if there's anywhere else that this comes up.
Well, and that, would, would it not be true that if it comes up anywhere else in an M two with a conditional use, that could be part of the condition? This is a minimum, right?
Yes.
So if we go, if it's a minimum of two hundred and we get somewhere that is, houses are two hundred and five feet and we, and during the condition, and the conditions of the project, say, th- this one needs to be three hundred because you've got houses right here. And then that we're not specifying it for a group of houses, you know, on the industrial park.
All right, move along then. Uh, we've got minimum lot size requirements, the original draft of this had it at a four hundred acre for any data center. This has been modified now, creating in some tiers. Minor would be whatever's allowed in the current zoning district. Major is five acre and a hundred for campus data center. So how do we feel about those numbers? Do we even need those numbers? Do we need to modify them?
You're using square, I'm sorry, you're using square footage on one letter and you're using acreage on the other? Maybe the same?
I don't, I'm sorry, sir.
Like on the description?
That's, that's not, under the, well, like the, I'm sorry, I'm the. Okay, we're talking about two different things there, one's talking to the square footage of the building versus the other is actually referring to the lot area.
Right.
And just normal vernacular, I don't prefer to building size and acreage and I don't normally prefer to lot size as square footage. Just through my normal course of business, but I mean, we can change it if that's what's wanted. So no comments on this section? Uh, we've still have the hundred foot buffer requirement that would be in concert with building setbacks. So if there's a two hundred foot building setback, first hundred feet would be buffering. Then there could be a hundred foot of activities taking place around that before it got to the building itself. But just the current way it's worded. Any comments there?
And activities, you mean green space?
Parking lot, security perimeter, fish and pond, whatever they, it's just, they're just not allowed in the building in that first two hundred feet. And again, these are from property lines. So if you had a property sub segregate, uh, subdivided within the industrial park, now you've got buffering being required between those. Should these, what wants to be considered, should this be to the perimeter of the project? Are we looking for buffering within the M two zoning district itself?
My, my gut feeling is the perimeter and not, because this is going to be the same situation we have. We don't, I don't think we worry about buffers between neighbors, you know, between two buildings.
Two similar businesses and buildings, right?
But forgive me, are we talking about, when we talk about buffer plus setback, are we talking about a hundred?
They're two separate things.
So they're in addition to?
No, on top of each other. Building is two hundred feet from the property line, first one hundred foot is buffering.
Trees and plants, yeah.
Any other comments on buffering? Mechanical screening, thought process there. Screening can help soften noise impacts. Most of these that I've seen have the HVAC equipment on the roof, so parapet walls are going to help divert sound up. The facade and security, well, the facade, trying to provide for some aesthetic considerations for the building, if it hasn't been buffered, what's it going to look like there? And then security fencing, we did revise this, added in some of the suggestion. It did leave out the verbiage about impeding the ability of wildlife to traverse it. I was, I was just concerned, how does a fence stop wildlife from moving and still provide its function? So that was one of the comments we had. So any comments on screening, the facade or security fencing? Accessory structures, I believe that still remains the same as we were in the initial draft. Landscaping, our landscaping regulations do not apply to developments in excess of five hundred feet from the highway. This makes it clear that if you're doing a major campus data center, you have to comply with our landscaping requirements regardless of your distance of that term as a gateway. Any comments there? Private roads, this is establishing some construction specifications for the roads within the development itself. Currently, they would not have to meet any specific standards. This would make them being paved and built with a proper base, so a proper road is going to be built. On-site power generation, this is making it clear, alternative structures, alternative sources are permitted. And it doesn't require additional approval. Emergency diesel generators are going to be permitted with this current verbiage here. But then there are some provisions here that if they try to increase the amount of non-emergency generation beyond what was approved at the conditional use permit phase, we've got to come back and ask again. So if they show on their initial plan, we're going to generate three hundred thousand watt megawatts or three hundred megawatts and then they decide, no, we need four hundred, they're going to have to come back, apply for another conditional use to expand their power generation as listed here. Any comments on onsite power generation?
What was the original text amendment, what did that say about onsite power generation?
I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me. I didn't bring that one with me. Any other concerns? Thirteen is conflicting provisions, fourteen prohibiting crypto, fifteen lighting is currently set at thirty five hundred K. And then also preventing light trespass. Any comments on those sections?
The only comment I make is, I don't know enough about lighting, so that's a bad amount of lighting in a large area.
So that's referring to color of the lighting, not the volume of it.
Thirty five hundred K, so it's, it's the type of light, you, you, like on your Christmas light, you got white light, warm light, cool light. It's the, it's the intensity of the light. But I think what gets us is the, to prevent any light trespass. So that means everything has to be, your, your line of, of light doesn't go off your property.
Must be a downcast type lighting.
Even your, even your light trajectory that comes down this side of it, if this is your property line, can't go out over the property lines, so.
It'd be interesting to know how that's accomplished, because I have a gas station across the way over here. And it looks like an airplane is landing coming across my head. But when you go to the building structure and look at it, it looks like the light is coming down.
So with the downcast light is the shroud extends below the bulb, so when you look, you can't see the bulb. What you're seeing right now, you, you actually can see the bulb on that light.
You probably have like a shoe head fixture that the LEDs go all the way around.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments? Noise levels? These are going to be the levels taken at the property line. There is an exception for emergency generator testing, limited to weekdays between eleven and one P M.
So my, my concern with noise levels are, is there any commercial or industrial entity in Jones County that has to follow noise levels?
The only one I could think of would be the quarries. Standards that are established not by the zoning regulations.
Why would we establish noise levels here when we don't have it on anything, right? We build a brand new restaurant in town, cars are going to pull in, they're going to be loud, you know? They're going to be taking orders, swap boxes, however loud it is. We're not taking decibel levels there to do that, so why, why are we doing that here? Is my concern. Example, prime example would be minor data center, the AT&T building in Hattie. You're never ever, if you were going to build that building today, right where it is, you would never, ever, never be at forty five daytime at thirty five in the night, right on the side of the road like that, right crossing that gas station with all the huddle balloon that goes on over there. Never. Now, if you wanted to say some sort of background noise sampling needs to be done and it can't exceed something based upon that, that's a reasonable conversation to have, but I just don't think that arbitrarily saying it can't be over thirty five decibels at night, not knowing where it's going to end up being anyway, is inappropriate in the day. And the way I take it with, with noise levels, the noise is existing noise because there are some where, I mean, the bypass, the traffic, you know, four, four lane highway, you're never going to be under fifty decibels there. With, unless it's three in the morning, there's no cars and then your decibel level's going down. But normal activity, and I think the difference in that and, and to me in a data center is twenty four hours a day that that noise is going off. But I don't, I, I agree a hundred percent, we can't penalize a company for making the same noise it's made during the daytime. If it's seventy five decibels on beside a highway and you build a right, building right beside it and you test it at seventy five decibels, you can't punish that, that building for doing that. I think the night setback to me is so that you don't have a, a loud, loud hum all night long, uh, continuous. And most all of our, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, most of our, all of our noise ordinances now talk about continuous noises, not intermittent noises. Whether it's a nuisance noise from a dog or from a stereo or from loud engines or whatever, it's a fifteen minute continuous, you know, noise that they'll come out and say, hey, you gotta stop that. But I, I don't think, and I, and I don't know how to fix this, if it's pre-construction decibel levels, or, or how do we fix that? And not say, if it's put next to a four lane highway or if it's put out in the middle of the center, center of the industrial park. The building itself makes the same noise, it's just where it's at. Different levels of recording. And let's say, you know, let's say you're building one on the road and however noisy that road is, just from its background noise, and in five years, that road's busier. Maybe it's four lane now, you know, it's a state highway, it's going to be louder. I mean, how, how are we going to identify, yes, it's louder because it's busier or it's louder because the, the person that is operating the business there is louder? I, I just think we're opening up a can that's going to be very hard to mitigate, I guess.
Tim, are you, are y'all requiring initial study before the business is built? Or have an idea of what the noise level is?
That is one of the proposals in this.
How, how long does that study last? Is it four hours, seventeen two hours?
Uh, the current draft does not specify how it's to be done.
It's kind of hard to say thirty five decibel to your bedroom at night. When you go to bed with both hands on, is only twenty five decibels. That would be impossible for any kind of industry, um, or data center.
Random question, do we have maximum or normal decibel levels of data centers built in the last three years? Should anybody have those readings?
Just have what I took, unscientifically, stand on the side of the room. The one I've visited was, the one I've visited was at sixty five during the day.
And just for the record, so we don't, people don't think, people just screaming out from the crowd. Tim's our county engineer, so he's, he should be sitting at the table, but he's, uh, sitting back there and not, so.
You know, at the end of the day, I want to be reasonable with our noise levels. I just did a little bit of simple research recently, I did a few things today. An electric lawnmower, zero turn lawnmower. Can I give you an idea of what the sound decibel that those are? Electric, no, no gas lawnmower, pretty, seventy five to eighty. You know what a washing machine in your house is? It's seventy five. Washing machines, thirty feet from my bedroom, I can't carry it night. And that's, I want to be reasonable. Gas main mower, zero turn, good condition, brand new, ninety to one hundred decibels.
Getting in your shower and taking a shower is seventy decibels.
And so I want to be reasonable where it's, we won't make it so we have unachievable sound noise, you know? I don't want any of that. Also fine, well, you're not going to want that washing machine in the bedroom. I don't want that lawnmower in the bedroom.
Also fine and well, you're not gonna want that washing machine in the bedroom, you're not gonna want that lawnmower in the bedroom.
You know, doing the research of it, my noise from the electric lawnmower is the blades cutting the grass, so the dishwasher's probably eighty-five to ninety.
The vacuum is seventy-five.
Right. Look, we need to be reasonable.
I mean, it's from the property line, though, right? Where they're measuring it from?
Yes.
What jumps out to me is that the minor is probably not gonna have such an impact, it's gonna be closer to a, maybe a commercial or negative residential. That's faster, different than a major and a campus, where you're not gonna have people that close, you're not gonna have bedrooms that close.
Agreed. I think that, I think with the size, the lot size limits are, are requirements for the major and campus helps the situation. I think you're not gonna have neighbors right there. I, I'm like John, I don't wanna be unreasonable for a data center that no data center can reach. And I don't know what a sixty-five decibels is for a data center at two hundred feet away, because that's how far you're gonna be from the property line for the building that's making noise. So what is sixty-five decibels at two hundred feet away compared to right now, what data centers are doing of an equivalent size? Because if, if no data center can, can reach this sixty-five decibels down, then we're basically excluding all data centers, and I don't think that's what we're trying to do, and that's what, I don't think that's what we wanna do. We, we're trying to find that not a, a burden to the, to the residents, at least to, and I don't, what would the setbacks for, for a house is? Forty-five feet?
Twenty, twenty to fifty.
Yeah.
Tim, what, what data center did you, did you go to Facebook, did ever you went?
The women's sanders.
Social search.
Social search?
Yeah, social search.
So, you know, you said sixty-five, and that's fine. Right across the street, you got Takeda, right, and they're, they're, it's a pharmaceutical manufacturer, they're taking Plazma, and they're turning it into all sorts of things. And right on the other side of Takeda, probably a thousand, two thousand feet from where you were, you got I-20. So to say that the data center was generating sixty-five decibels, we don't know. We just know that the street with that Facebook here, and Takeda here, and I-20 here, you had sixty-five decibels.
I, I will say, when it was sixty-five, what I was hearing was the fans on top of the facility. Where I was at, you're slightly elevated above the building, so you're seeing down into that, and, you know, cars going by, I-20 behind me, might've gone up to seventy, seventy-five, when it calmed down and was quiet, what I was hearing was, was that.
Cause there's a, I went to at a different time, there's a real consistent hum that you can differentiate from anything else that's going on around you. I didn't have the ability to measure the level, I could just tell that is the data center, and what was the two, no traffic going by, there's no way on me, I was directly across the street from it. So I, yeah, I didn't see it. And there's nothing straight across the street from the picture.
We had, that whole, Takeda was the first tenant there, right, and they were the, built down I-20, on that side, on that road coming in? I don't know.
It was, there's a residential subdivision, I came in from west going east, like two seventy-eight. There's a residential subdivision about maybe a mile west by the road, probably west by the way your road fly. And then on past there, I don't know what there is, but to the north, there's woods, and then there is I-20 per road. But I couldn't hear I-20 where I was at, and everything was quiet, we heard the hum of the data center, and nothing else. I mean, it wasn't terrible, but it's a consistent steady hum, and you know it's there.
I, I just keep going back to the background noise. Yeah, I think if you're worried about some sort of standard, it needs to be associated to a background noise before construction, instead of just an arbitrary number that's made up, right?
And I will say, like the thirty-five, forty-five, where that came from, if we were dealing with an application in a rural setting, and what is your typical ambient noise level in rural Jones County? And that's where the forty-five, thirty-five came from, when it's dead quiet, nothing going on, calm wind, you're gonna be about forty-five during the day, thirty-five at night. And that's where that, so it was just, you know, that was the number I used when I put in here, and that's where that number came from.
So does the noise level need to become part of a conditional use decision? And there are parameters that we use to say, if it's in this kinda area, then this is the level that needs to be part of that conditional use? Would that work?
Well, I think that's why we tiered leveled the different, different ones, because of the size of the, the size of the building, the size of the unit, the noise that it's gonna put off was, was tiered as it got larger. So you're not gonna be able to put a campus data center on five acres of land with other structures around it. You gotta have the bigger, bigger property to fit it on there, and, and the larger setbacks. So if your property's bigger, your setbacks are larger, and your decibel level's higher, it all fits in the category. I don't know the answer to the existing noise. You know, so that's. Yeah.
What if it was to say, uh, modeling may be presented that provides what the base level is, um, may not exceed that base level, or these numbers, if they are, if the base level is, is lower than this, I don't know. So if you had a minor data center along the state highway, they provide their base level modeling, it was fifty, then they could do fifty. But if it comes in and their base level's thirty-five, they're stuck at forty-five, thirty-five at the time of permitting.
Do you have a question for me? How do you have a time limit tested?
It's exempted.
So there's an exemption problem? What was it?
Yes, um.
Because it's restricted to a time limit during the day, and it's hour testing.
Well, you have to get tested to believe that it was gonna be an issue if power goes out and runs for three or four days straight?
I think we've got.
We've got provisions that, don't know how exactly it's gonna be addressed, but right now, it says they can only run X amount of hours per year, or X amount of hours continuously. So it would be an issue for an emergency situation. If you had a disaster, yes, they're going to break that sound level, but it does cap it for a, a time limit.
We talked last meeting about complaint generators tested, uh, compliance. On the next page, or?
Uh, we have that countywide, don't we, as far as, um, any, any time, and I think it's in any of our divisions, if there's a complaint, it has to be addressed, you know, um, cause we have a complaint system, or our callers system, basically, that, um. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, if you, if you got a call and said, hey, this thing's way louder than y'all said it was, or y'all permitted, you would be responsible to go out and check that, or, I mean, we don't have every month we go out, or every six months, we go out and check the, the noise levels, just to make sure they're in compliance, um.
Nick, when you hear about, read about, that could develop data centers, it's a noise problem.
Yeah.
I need control, nobody can sort out. And, uh, if you're wanting them tested, once per week, or, uh, the other times, the other times, like, like private area, that's when we get your complaints. You're responsible for that, how do you respond to that?
That testing that you're referring to, testing the generators, right? That's not the actual noise testing in the area.
Cause I think they'll have redundant systems, the noise level's the same until the generator comes on for testing their noise.
That's an exemption to the noise restriction to allow generator testing.
Yeah, so they don't have to be within the sixty-five decibels when the generator comes on for an hour. It exempts it for the time that it's testing. And then, uh, the, the provisions that Tim was talking about, what, what if the power goes out for two hours at nine o'clock at night, you know? Are they still exempted for two hours, so that their whole system helps shut down for two hours?
And if I could just circle to the question, Mr. Hoyt, if I received a complaint, I would go out and evaluate what's going on? How I would take those sound level testing, and what would be required to document an actual violation, that I don't, I can't speak to, and I don't know, I've never done certified sound level testing, I don't know if we have to hire somebody to do that, I, I just don't know how that would work in this case.
But I would say from, from the county standpoint, um, I, every complaint that we have has to be investigated, because if we get a written complaint, or a documented complaint, and we said, eh, whatever, we're not gonna do anything about it, the next letter was probably gonna be from somebody's attorney, that you didn't do anything about it, and you said you were gonna hold it to this restriction. So I think, whatever that means, I think is, not putting words in my mouth, whatever that means from a county standpoint, I think is, if we have to hire somebody, then we assess that complaint, cause I don't think it's gonna be, hey, this thing came on for five minutes, and it was so loud, I couldn't stand it, and then when you get out there and it's not doing it, if it's a problem, it's a problem, and I think we, as a county, have to address it by whatever means it is, and if Tim's not qualified to give us, or doesn't have the equipment to give us the answer, we gotta, we gotta get the person that can, or get the equipment that can.
Can we address that on the next page of your remarks in Russian?
Well, I don't know, Wendy, cause I haven't known the next page yet.
Should we keep on moving now? All right, so water consumption, we're just limiting, have to use closed loop for a data center? For their cooling needs, they're not allowed to have wells, wells for water supply, period. And evaporative cooling is expressly prohibited. Any comments on that?
Um, do we wanna request that there's like a ban on PFOS in the plumbing system? Those are like those forever chemicals that can hurt people in the most simplistic way you can describe it? Or we could settle for like disclosing, um, in EPFOs, you know, like if they're putting that in their cooling system, that they have to put that in their application, like what exactly is gonna be in there, and maybe what the mitigation plan is, like secondary containment systems, et cetera?
Well, the secondary containment system is, that's covered by E P D. And that's gonna fall under spill prevention control and countermeasures, or stormwater pollution prevention plans, that's an E P D function, that's not a Jones County function within that.
I agree, I don't, I don't have a problem asking them what's in there, whether it's glycol, or whatever that's in their cooling system, I don't have a problem with that, but a, but a plan to mitigate issues, uh, that come from spills or something like that, you're right, that gets into the E P D, EPA, and, and.
Any, any facility, manufacturing, whatever, is gonna be required to keep safety data sheets on any chemical that have on the site. That's fully available to the fire department, or to employees that work there. I don't know why we would ask, you know, any industry that's coming, or any company that's coming to Jones County, to have to list everything they've got within. Regarding PFOS, if we're so strong against PFOS, um, we need to outlaw, um, non-stick pans in Jones County. Cause the Teflon only non-stick pans PFOS. So when you scramble your eggs, and your pizza, and your, you know, your piece of Teflon comes off, and you eat it, you can ingest a PFOS. You know, it's, these closed-loop systems are perfectly glycol, that's essentially anything, essentially what it is. So I don't think it's right to ask any industry what you maintain, that's between them and State of Georgia, and the fire department, as far as what they have on their site.
Well, PFOS is also present in our residential HVAC systems as well.
We're fine with closed-loop system, I mean, that's acceptable thing, so.
Any other comments on that? Uh, traffic management plan, um, this is referencing the building permit phase, not during the conditional use phase. It's the way it's currently worded here. From staff's perspective, thought process was, they hadn't identified how they were going to be building this thing at this phase, when they're trying to get zoning approval. So a traffic management plan, I don't know how they would generate one at that phase, cause they don't know what they're doing at that point. Any comments on that?
D R I would also include traffic condition.
I'm not directly, that, that is one of the things they ask on that, how many trips it's gonna generate every day, and that kinda stuff, but what, how far down they dig on that, I don't know.
The D R I will give you information on traffic patterns, who are the inconvenience in traffic, but you're right, until we get, uh, a, a, a plan designed, and a civil design, and site plans, we're not gonna know where your traffic is coming in and out, and how you're gonna mitigate traffic problems, but.
Our next section, environmental impact study, um, Mr. Riley provided a comment, was concerned, I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but this was just kinda, our current verbiage is kinda fluffy, and it doesn't require enough, and he provided substantial revision to this section. Encourage everybody to take a look at that, and see if we need to modify this section.
Um, you know, we talked about this very first thing that we talked about, and we're, we're addressing everything in here, in, in most of these, except archaeological and cultural resources, and natural resources. So the study would, would provide that, uh, impact, and then we, we talked about it for the county reserve and the right, for additional areas of study. We're getting, I think we're getting too cart before the horse, too specific on what we're asking for with an unknown location, because there are parts of Jones County that if they wanted to develop, we absolutely know it's real close to a historical site, or it's real close to a archaeological site, that we would guaranteed ask for all these studies, and then some. And then some would go, okay, well, we did this development, and we had that study done right beside it, you know? Give us the preliminary studies, and we should be good to go. Um, but I think being able to ask for more, uh, reserving the right to add additional areas of study for site-specific conditions that show that there will be an impact, or potential impact, I think gives us that clear authority in it. I, I don't, I don't wanna be too restrictive in the, because we don't know where it's going, um, what the actual application is, so in, in the front side of it, I think we're, we don't wanna be, or I don't wanna be that restrictive. I think we've got what we need covered in this one.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, but don't the studies and all that we already do, in the development authority, I mean, in the industry department, already have all of that completed?
Yeah, but we're talking about countywide.
I mean, if it's somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah, so this is, this is about data centers in the county.
Isn't that just like a phase one environmental impact assessment, and then you have like a geo-technical thing, maybe like a wetland, and then we should, what's going on with the industrial?
So for grad, we have to have all the things that were just listed in there?
The, the studies, stuff?
Most of them, I mean, the bank is not required for banks.
Any other comments on the impact study?
So, I mean, I guess there's just like a little bit of an inconsistency, we call it environmental impact study, but then it says information. So are we requiring studies, or are we just requiring information? Does that make sense? It's titled environmental impact study, and then conditional use application for campus or major data centers, showing include information, potential impacts. So I mean, getting anything done, like using the industrial park as an example, like we have probably a baseline of what's going on there environmentally, culturally, archaeologically, but we would not have, um, studies already done on potential impacts from a particular industry, whether that be a data center or something else, because, I mean, why would we have paid to have had that done? So I'm requesting that we stick with the title, and change the wording in the first sentence to a conditional use application for campus or major data center, showing include studies on potential impacts to air quality, water resources, et cetera, et cetera. I know that, um, I think it was like the draft that planning and zoning board submitted? back in, in August and September, the wording said study at that point, um, and then was subsequently changed to information. And, and, and I think that this, yes, at the end, that we reserve the right to require additional areas of study is good, but I do think it would be, um, in the best interest of the county, our finite resources, the, the health and safety of the public to have it say study instead of information, um, specifically on air quality, water resources, um, and, and energy generation. Those, those first three, I think are the most important things that would be wise to say study on potential impacts of, of a data center to those three, um, things.
I, I hear what you're saying, but my issue with air quality is not controlled by us. Um, the, the water resources, we're not, we're, we've, we've stopped that because we're not allowing them to pull our water resources. And the, um, what was the third one? The, uh, yeah, the energy use, that, that we're not, we don't produce the energy either, so.
I understand that, but wouldn't we wanna know when we're, when we're deciding whether to approve or deny a conditional use permit, like what that's gonna look like? Like what the impacts on the water, the air and the power would be? I know we don't control that per se, but it's just acting with more.
I guess, yeah, but I guess with our restrictions on water, there is no impact of that because they're not digging wells on our property. So there's no impact to our water. There's no, i- if there is impact to our, um, uh, polluting the air, they can't do it based off a higher power than us. We don't control that at the local level. So they're, they have to give those studies anyway to the EPA, uh, for, um, for the pollutions put into the air. Tim, can you talk about the level of the studies that had to be done, uh, for, for grad certification as far as what they, a little more in detail so we can get a comfortable of what those studies required? Because I feel like with those studies, we talked about them and they were pretty expensive to have those studies done. And we know what's there. So a- any project that comes in, we've got a baseline on that and we're asking for, we can ask for any additional.
The biggest one was the archaeological or the, when we worked with the wetlands, we were looking at doing the wetland impact. Then we went to second load, spread it in the wet. We spent about forty three in the head and recovered three months. From the gas line back to the railroad track back to this, but that, that side of the park is an in-depth studies because of what the old maps that showed that there were iron roads, slave ports, possible city areas. That probably, um, they did it from Kansas and I would play their games and that was. The geotechnical, they drilled. I think one hole for every ten acres in the park or every twenty acres in the park. Um, it was, it was a pretty expensive study. I think all over that down. I mean, in all the areas, what, four or five?
They've added more now. You've got to have, um, you have to have the air study, you have to have archaeological, cultural resources, the container species. You also have to have the geotechnical, you have to have, um, in some cases you have to have wetlands, all of that.
So I know for every land disturbance permit that I pulled to build a building, you have to have a phase one site assessment, which just gives you the base level of everything. Anytime there's a, a wetland delineated on the property, you gotta mitigate all of that. Anytime there's a, a highway close by, you gotta mitigate the dangers. And, and I'll be honest, not the dangers coming from the building, but what if we build a building two hundred foot off the road and a tanker truck runs into another tanker truck on a full-lane highway? Both of them are full of, of, uh, kerosene or, you know, extremely flammable stuff. We've gotta protect against that. So there's, all those are, are put into the mitigation, studies done when you're looking at building a building. So I think, you know, I, I mean, I feel like we've got a, a, a pretty good grasp on what we're looking for at the starting point we're asking for and then, and then there is the right to do it, um, further studies if needed.
To have to sure that there are three wells on that side of the industry, so rather we're going, I call this test. And here we do cross samples and all that. It's, it's a good, pretty big. I don't know, but it'd be, yeah, there are twenty-four trains a day that run up and down the track. It was the last one right here. They're about three miles long. They're, they're pulling wood, they're pulling moly, they're pulling coin. I mean, it's a lot of stuff that goes up down that track. A lot of danger still. There's a lot of stuff that can't be carried up the road anymore. It's, it's a lot of down that grid and then die.
For the sake of time, coming up on our hour, let's go ahead and look through what we have left. Uh, DRI, if the state pauses it again, this gives the option to defer the application until the state resumes reviews. Doesn't make it mandatory, gives the county that option the way it's currently worded. Decommissioning plan. The, uh, this one doesn't require the building itself, but looking for the electronic waste and things that were part of the building operation to be handled properly. Also requiring the posting of a bond, uh, to anticipate those costs. Emergency generation. Originally, this was phrased out, if I remember right, the numbers I grabbed were like seventy-two hours and a hundred and eighty hours, seventy-two hours continuous, a hundred and eighty hours. Um, intermittent operation over the course of one calendar year. After doing some more research, found out that the restrictions by the state were far less than that. And so went with this verbiage here. I don't know if we need to revisit that, but it'd be something to look at there. And then wastewater processing, uh, that gets spelled out here, requiring that they connect to a municipal or county sewer system. Uh, they're not allowed to have any kind of on-site disposal. And then finally, uh, exemptions, created some exemptions. Public utilities are exempted and then data centers that do not exceed ten percent of up to twenty-five hundred square feet of a building. Any comments on those? Thank y'all.
Tim, I think from, uh, the only, I think the discussion for y'all's board or the, the planning and zoning board would be the, um, decimals, how do we determine what is existing conditions? Uh, it's the easiest way I know how to put it, um, so that we don't penalize, uh, if we're saying sixty-five is, sixty-five is our decimal and, um, you know, h- how do we know that's the facility creating that and not existing conditions? How do we, how do we offset that, you know?
Can I read some of the letters? Alright, so, um, a young man was from Jones County, he is personally a lawyer and he is overseeing a data center. This is what I asked him about decimals. He said, based on typical data center equipment sound level, levels, here is a simple breakdown of what you would expect at two hundred feet. Equipment that produces eighty to a hundred decimals at the source, measured from about ten feet away, will generally measure fifty-four to seventy-four at two hundred feet. If there's no obstruction from the source and the quality line. If equipment is partially shielded by buildings or terrain, levels drop drastically, drop typically at five to ten decimals. A purpose-built sand wall or rim can reduce levels by fifteen decimals or more, bringing more scenarios into compliance with your limits of forty-five to sixty by daytime and thirty-five to fifty by nighttime, fifteen on data to your systems.
Next step, Tim, I, I, I guess we need to address the, I call it the elephant in the room. I know that there's been, uh, so I've gotten many emails about extending the moratorium for a hundred and eighty days. I'm just, I'm giving my opinion. Other board members can do what they wanna do. I, I don't see any need in extending the moratorium. We've done what we planned to do, which was have these work sessions. We've had discussions between our boards. We've had time to, to look at these things and do, I've done more. I've done more homework on this project than any project I've ever done. And, uh, I, I'm just personally at a point where I think we've gotten to a point where our text amendment for what we're looking at, data, the data centers for M two conditional use is what, is what we're talking about. And, uh, I would, uh, I would hope that at the next, um, board meeting for the planning and zoning, that they have y'all's discussion or, and, and bring a recommendation, uh, to the, to the board on what we, the text amendment we were talking about, uh, to bring it to the board meeting. We are, I've already voted on the beginning, the process for the M three and what that looks like. And we have, um, legal representation, um, helping us with that and so that we are going down the right path. And so that's a, that's a drawn-out process that, that really has nothing to do with the text amendment. But it gets us the protections now. If a data center wants to make an application, we've got text amendment protections that we didn't have three months ago when we, um, uh, put the moratorium on. Uh, I supported it at the time to get more time to do this. And I think if we, if we put another moratorium on, I don't think that we're gonna, I, I don't think we're gonna get anywhere that we're not at now. Just, just being honest. And I don't think, um, it, it just, it just kicks the can down the road and that, and I'm, I don't wanna say I'm, I'm tired of bannerin' it back and forth, but, um, you know, we, we've had three work sessions with three different boards and with a community group that was intentional, how we set this up is intentional about how we ask for input and how we ask for discussions on this, agreements and disagreements. And, uh, you know, I think we've, I've, I think we've done what the plan was to do is to try to get the best information that we can, uh, to get us a starting point with, with, uh, conditional use M two. So.
We don't have a lawyer going over this, this law, just the M three?
Yes, that, uh, yeah, we don't have a lawyer going over our M two, our text amendment here. This is something, I mean, we've never had an attorney do text amendments before. We've done, we've done a few since I've been here. Changes to, to zoning or this.
With my concern with data center, so big, so there's an impact that we get somebody we could reach out to. Is there somebody, a planning and zoning board member we can reach out to for the data center, that we're working on right now?
As in, uh, legal representation?
For planning and, and for data center, uh, zoning purposes.
Absolutely. But, but I can tell you what they're gonna tell you, a, a, a text amendment is local control. So they're gonna tell you, you can put whatever you want in there. It's, 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 it's local control. There's no state law that says you can or cannot put something in your own local control. They won't give you that guidance. Now attorneys will tell you what's legal and not legal as far as verbiage, but, um, they're gonna push everything, thing down to the local level, which is, you know, our responsibility to, uh, determine, uh, what those best practices are for our need. But, but yes, um, I, I don't know that attorney's gonna give you much advice, give us much advice on, um, hey, are we doing the right thing? Or hey, is this good or is that good? Uh, I don't think they're gonna give us any input on the language we put in there. Absolutely can look over and say, yeah, this is, this is legal. Um, there's nothing there that's, that we're doing that's illegal, but, um, we've had attorneys look at the draft and say, I don't see any problems with it. But, but yeah, we've got, uh, the legal that we can, if y'all have questions or if you wanna talk to them, we can make that happen. Right, Tim? I, I think our county attorney can make that happen.
Can I make an announcement about our meeting next Thursday? Um, development authorities hosting a, um, Central Georgia Regional Commission is, is putting on a presentation next Thursday at the Tri-County Community Room about the impact of industry. This is not a data center conversation. This is an educational time put on by the Central Georgia Regional Commission about the impact of industry in Jones County. As well as George Power and Tri-County is gonna have some representatives there. I know one of the questions that get asked a lot is if industry needs power, who pays the bill for the infrastructure for that power? Um, so George Power and Tri-County is gonna have people there to talk about that as well. Anything else?
Um, so the community has questions that they would like any of our power representatives or, um, our water department to answer. They can email my email and we will work those questions on, um, to the panel. Um, and then also we'll talk about the entire economic development process and what we as a development authority do and how that process works. And it's from six to seven thirty.
And I hope people attend because that's a huge opportunity to have people that are in that business and do that at the state level all day long, every day. That's what they do. And it also gives a chance to ask questions from the, uh, power and water providers that we can't answer as, as a local, um, commission because we don't control those, those. And there's a lot of questions about, well, how will this affect my power? How will this affect my power bill? How will this affect my, um, uh, uh, quality of power or the consistency of power? And, and they can answer those a lot better than we can.
Please come. Dinner will not be provided.
One just last thing. The, I believe the moratoriums expect, set to expire around the nineteenth of January. Does that sound right? So the current time cycle right now, the planning commission is scheduled to meet, our normal meeting will be on the twenty-sixth of January with the board commissioners making a final decision if there's a recommendation from the planning commission on February third. So right now we're looking at a two-week gap before we can have something in place before the moratorium expires.
Are we all meeting on the twenty-sixth?
That's our meeting date, yes, January twenty-sixth.
I'm a chamber, I guess I can answer.
So, so you're saying that it would expire the eighteenth, nineteenth and then there would be a two-week gap?
Yes, ma'am.
Or we could extend the moratorium?
Even if we have a called meeting and then the board of commissioners were willing to hear zoning, the best we could do would be January twentieth. So there would be a day lap between the two before you could have a final decision. We'd have a planning commission meeting if they agreed to meet on Jul- January twelfth. Then your regular meeting on January twentieth. So there would be a day lap there, day or two.
I think we need to extend the moratorium. Is there a, or, ask the board for one?
I don't know. Um, that would, we would have to ask.
The only concern would be that we probably wanna follow the zoning procedures act for notification to extend the moratorium. I'm basing that on advice from council. So if we're gonna even extend it for a couple of days to cover this gap, probably wanna advertise and get that in place before the next board of commissioners meeting. We're intending to extend this moratorium.
Is there a minimum, based on your experience, either in the past or your, your experience, is there a minimum extension or maybe a maximum, whatever, I don't know, maybe days or so? Is there a minimum extension of fourteen days or twenty days or whatever?
No, I've never heard of a minimum. I have heard maximums that have been bannered about because you can't just arbitrarily hold things up. There needs to be a defined governmental purpose. Extending the moratorium to finish getting the ordinance in place. I, I think council would advise that that's acceptable. in extending the moratorium to finish getting the ordinance in place. I, I think council would advise that that's acceptable.
I mean, why would it be bad to extend the moratorium? I just wanna get it on record, like particularly those commissioners, like why are we opposed to extending the moratorium?
I would.
To make sure Ts are crossed and our Ps are dotted.
I would counter with, with, why would we extend the moratorium? Because we've, I think we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. I'm comfortable with it.
I mean, just to further fulfill subs- subsequent process. I mean, they're, they're, this is a complicated process, and I think that there's.
And, and we've spent more time on this complicated process than we have any other process since I've been on this board. And, uh, I'm just comfortable where we are. I don't think extending it a day or two hundred days is gonna get me anywhere different than I am, because we've covered everything that I was fearful of not having protections of, um, for, for our data center.
My suggestion was only to get us through the meetings.
Yeah, and, and so I'm torn on, do we have a called meeting, so we don't go, have to go through the process of advertising, extending a moratorium just to meet a few-day deadline of a board meeting? Or, because we're gonna have to advertise, what all does that, about just advertising and then having it at our next meeting?
Yes, sir. And add, yeah, add in the paper.
And then our, so our next meeting would be the twentieth, so we'd be extending it?
At the first meeting in January, if you wanted to extend it, that would be when you take that action. And you would need to have an add in the paper next week to accomplish that. And then that would, if the planning commission was willing to meet on January twelfth, then that would have that on the agenda for the August, uh, the June, January twentieth meeting of the board of commissioners.
So, you got a one-day lapse.
Right, it either expires the eighteenth or nineteenth, so yeah, there's a, there's a one-day lapse there. Which wouldn't be a business problem, it's not a business day, but then somebody could come in the office on the twentieth.
So, we're good on the twelfth?
You are good on the twelfth.
Tim, what, what happens if somebody comes in on the nineteenth, files, I forget if you don't have twenty in the class?
It was a holiday at the, the nineteenth, you know, okay.
So, you're closed.
Or they're closed.
They could come in on the twentieth, file.
Right.
And so then, we don't have these standards in place. What that means, I don't know. They could be assigned as a condition of zoning, that they have to comply with this, but it hasn't been adopted yet.
So, you, you would take the zoning application, the rezoning application? I guess my question is, how would you evaluate it, if you don't have any place to be down?
I would evaluate it as any other conditional use application at that point.
But you're evaluating it for ten hours, nine hours?
No.
Cause you.
Cause it predates the ordinance. It does become retroactively effective.
I guess that's. Do we have a, uh, I guess this is a board question for the board, so do we have a feel that we're gonna have a, somebody come try to slip in a, uh, an application on the day? Tim?
The only other thing is, unless you guys wanted to have a called meeting the week, week of January twelfth, our P and Z board would be meeting on January twelfth, and then that could be prepared for that week, but you'd have to have a called meeting.
Sam, I would prefer to appear on the side caution. That's it. I think it's on the school, like Jones County, people in it.
Air on the side of caution, having called meetings?
Yes, yes.
Um, so that means we would have to have a meeting, maybe through a different calendar, um, January, the week of January twelfth as well?
Yes, sir.
Hmm, could do any night except the fifteenth. You can or can't? The fourteenth, does that give us enough, does that give us the appropriate time for notification of the, the meeting?
You can do notification. Preparing the minutes is gonna be a problem.
Oh, between.
Depending on verbiage, the meeting is.
Between theirs and ours?
Yeah.
Cause theirs is on the twelfth.
Yes, sir.
These are twenty-four hours.
Let's also assume that the item doesn't get tabled by the planning commission.
If it doesn't, we have a meeting on the fourteenth, we're still ahead of the moratorium ending. Right?
If the planning commission tabled it, it would not receive forward, and then we would not be able to extend the moratorium.
We don't have a date of notification.
Right. I know, I'm just, um, speak, that'd probably be a better question for council, and based on my conversations, I feel like we need to advertise extending the moratorium, if that becomes an option.
Alright, well, let's, um.
And Sharon, I'm sorry, I've got another meeting I've gotta get to.
Yeah, I did too. Uh, I was supposed to be there at six, but let's, um, let's get clarification from legal on that one.
Okay.
So, we can reach out to, to council and see.
Um, well, what, I don't care if we meet on, I mean, we can still meet on the twelfth, if you guys wanna do that date. Just two weeks early, then we're typically met, I don't, met. I don't want that to affect your decision. We can just proceed forward on the twelfth.
I think we plan, we plan for the meetings, but what we need legal, uh, uh, opinion on is the notification for extending the moratorium in case it gets deferred at y'all's meeting and/or deferred at our meeting.
Sorry, thank you.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? Uh, thank everybody for their time and their, uh, input on these. It's been a, it's been a long process.